I'm Felipe Fuentes and Marquis, Marquis Dawson Hayes. We are here today, Monday, December 7th, in room 340, the chamber room, City Hall, for a meeting scheduled for 1:30. I note the hour is right at about 1:30. And we are ready to commence. Please read, start the meeting.
Mr. Chair, item one is HCID and CAO reports relative to pass-through of the cost of seismic retrofit repairs. And the CAO report is on further funding options.
Okay, great. So, you know, we've had this conversation going on for about 12 months. In the beginning, there was a discussion that there was going to be 100% pass-through to the tenants, and people were very upset. I said, "That would not be the case. We would have to walk our way through this." We, in this area, have so much money. The region is one of the wealthiest places in the world, and so I wanted to make sure that we sought out some of those resources. One of them was AB 428, our efforts to receive tax credits from Sacramento. Tax credits equal to 30% of the qualified costs paid are incurred by the qualified taxpayer. That's good legislation. It was not in the budget, but it was good legislation. The governor vetoed it. He noted that he was giving the city of Los Angeles $300 million in tax credit for the movie industry. And so they were the beneficiaries of the largesse of the state. It went to all the movies you see in our streets, but not to us, to you who provide housing, and to you, the tenants. Those are choices that people make. Those are policy choices, and all have their own consequences. I'm not satisfied with that, and we will continue to work with the legislature, with Mr. Nazarian's office, and his very capable chief of staff, Dan Savage, to see if we can have that bill reintroduced, put that in the budget, or, in the alternative, find other legislation that focuses on the incredible wealth of the earthquake authority and their very robust funds that exist. I would rather spend the money before the earthquake to make sure that we have the minimum amount of damage versus after the earthquake, when the damage is at its optimum. Other cities have taken other approaches. Portland was able to obtain FEMA money, and I want us to find out how they did that. San Francisco did a direct pass-through, I believe, to the tenants, and I don't know how they could afford to do that in that area. But, as I said, other people have taken other approaches. We're going to try to find the best balanced approach, and the approach where everybody can come together. There is a sense and an experience that I have, that when people settle agreements, the most difficult day is the last day, because it's hard for people to realize that we've come to closure. But I believe that we are on the cusp of that right now, and we have an opportunity to close this. I'd like to hear from my colleagues, including Mr. Price, who's joined us. But I'd like to hear from Mr. Dawson Hayes, you have a scheduled event, Mr. Fuentes, and of course, Mr. Price.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and members. Thank you for allowing me to comment on this. This is a tremendous accomplishment on the part of everybody who's been involved in it for the past 12 months. I come into it, obviously, in the middle of the process, understanding the big pieces. An earthquake will happen. We have lots of people who live in places where, that are not earthquake safe, and the technology exists to make places earthquake safe. And so the city has set about a process to make that, those sets of steps, happen. In the last couple conversations that we had about this, that I was privileged to be a part of as a committee member, just two principal concerns came up. One was first brought up by my colleague, Councilmember Fuentes, and then I brought up the second one. The first one was about this question of demolition, right? And so there was language about demolition. If people didn't bring it up to par in a certain amount of time, that there would, there would be demolition, and it was repeated over and over again in the document. And we said, "The term demolition should be taken out. That's alarmist to almost everybody." I'm looking at something in front of me that seems like that didn't necessarily happen, so I want to get some feedback about that. And then my last concern, and again, I recognize it's new, I'm new to the process, but it's something, an idea I want to put forward and push in the future. And that is, in the United States, if someone's being asked to make, to finance a capital project, they ought to get the rights that people get when they invest in capital projects. And that is typically, in almost every case, an equity position of some kind. And so, again, I understand that's a, in this situation, it's a complicated, a complicated concept, because we, we haven't traditionally treated renters like capital investors. But in fact, if there is a pass-through, they're being asked to finance a capital improvement on a building that they have no right to at all, once they move. And so, in the future, we want, I want everybody to think about how to make that a reality, so that being in the position of being a renter, of being in a position of being poor, doesn't mean you're constantly leaking money, of which you have the least of everybody involved. You're constantly leaking money from your budget with no return, zero return. You get exactly the same thing you would get if you didn't make that investment. And so, those are, those are the two issues that are very big for me and have given me significant pause. But I look forward to hearing from my colleagues, and certainly from public comment today, to see how it will fall.
Thank you. Mr. Fuentes?
I just have questions for the presentation.
Great. Mr. Price? Great. Let's bring up the CAO to report.
Sarai Baca with the CAO's office. The report before you provides a menu of options to consider for the seismic retrofit program. It is definitely not a comprehensive list. This is just a place to start the conversation, and for the committee to give staff additional direction about which issues you would like further information about. The CAO previously reported on property assessed, clean energy, or PACE, as a financing opportunity for property owners. But for purposes of today, I thought maybe we could just go through the attachment, and, and then you can provide additional direction based on the attachment, attachment A of the report.
Please.
You already addressed the state's tax credit, so I won't go over that. But Assembly Bill 428 would have provided a great opportunity for the city to benefit by the tax credit. The California Residential Mitigation Program is a joint powers authority that was established by the California Earthquake Authority and the Governor's Office of Emergency Services. The mitigation program provides, a program called Earthquake Brace and Bolt, that provides up to $3,000 in grants for residential properties that do the retrofit. This is primarily for properties that are single-family, up to 10 units at this time. We could pursue developing a relationship with the JPA and seeing if there's an opportunity to develop a grant program for the city. Community Development Block Grant is a fund that could possibly be used to fund a rebate or grant program. It would require that 51% of the properties' residents are low and moderate income tenants. That would be something that the city could look into as part of the development of the con plan. Federal Emergency Management Agency grant funds, or FEMA grant funds, may be available also as part of their Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. There may be a matching requirement that we would have to take into consideration. The first step to that would be ensuring that some identification of this program is included in the city's local, local hazard mitigation plan that needs to be submitted. There's also the opportunity to approve fee waivers, but I would defer to Building and Safety and the City Attorney's Office to address that in more detail. Business tax exemptions have also been brought up as a possible tool, where tenants that relocate to buildings that have been retrofitted would receive a tax break on their business taxes. Or in the alternative, properties that retrofit above the mandated standard would also, could also be given a tax benefit. This is something that we could look into and work with the City Attorney's Office to report back on, but it's my understanding that there would be some charter section implications that we would have to be careful about in how we construct any kind of a business tax exemption. Rebates are also an opportunity to support the program. Rebates could be funded either by grants or by any other funding source, but in any case, we would need to develop a program and procedures about how we would want to distribute the funds to property owners. And that would require the adoption of a policy. We would need to identify a department to be the administering department, and, and most likely identify funds to administer, for the administrative costs. We also have the bank workshop option, similar to what San Francisco did when they adopted their ordinance. They hosted a workshop where they invited banks and community lenders to educate them about their program. And the lenders that were present were added to a list, and that list was posted to the city's website. And that way, property owners would have a contact information about lenders that were interested in supporting the program. We could encourage the bankers that we do business with to look into low-cost loans to support property owners. And the last item is debt financing, where we would use GO bonds, or Melrose bonds, or Mclough funding to support a grant or rebate program.
Ben Sahel with the CAO. Just as I would, Sarai just mentioned, these recommendations are not entirely exclusive or non-exclusive of one another. We can be instructed to pursue a number of these, in particular, those where we're working or trying to work with the state or the feds to, to provide additional resources to the city. I would however state that with regard to any city-sponsored subsidies, at some point, we can't be trying to focus on too many of them at once. We'll have to make a determination, hopefully with others in the city, whether it's CLA or other departments, to determine which are the best approaches with regard to, to any type of subsidy program. And I would, I would say that the fee waivers, business tax exemption, rebates, and the debt financing would fall under that kind of city-sponsored subsidy program.
Mr. Chair, thank you. So, a couple of things. I, I think that it's important to, as we talk about these types of activities and mandates, I think it's really important for us, obviously, to move forward so that we can position Los Angeles to be as fortified as possible when it comes to a seismic event. And so, I'm glad that we're moving forward, but I have to just remind us that when we had this conversation before, I firmly believe that if you're going to make the mandate, and we're going to have a conversation about additional resources to satisfy the mandate, we shouldn't bifurcate them. And that's, that's what we did. So I, I hope that this doesn't make it harder for some of us to support the resource part of this conversation, because I think that the mandate is going to take, I don't think, it's going to take effect January 1. Is that correct?
No, the ordinance took effect November 22nd.
I'm sorry. So, it's taken effect?
Yes.
And so, now, the question before us is, if we do nothing, what is the existing cost recovery model for folks who now satisfy the mandate? They have the ability to pass through 100%, is that correct?
I defer to housing on the pass-through discussion.
Okay. So maybe what I'll do is sort of talk about that when we get to item two. But my sense is that if we don't do anything today, we will be limited to the existing range of options that are currently before the housing department and housing providers. And I think that we are looking at 100% pass-through over a certain amount of time if we don't do something. And so, you know, I want to thank the CAO's office for coming forward with this chart of ideas on what to do. And so let me limit my questions to that. And when we get to item two, we'll, we'll dig down a little bit. So, item B, the California Residential Mitigation Program, it says here in the description here that it could grant fund opportunities available to property owners in the city who are required to seismically retrofit their properties. Does the program currently, is that its mission, to help with seismic renovation? Or what is it that the California Residential Mitigation Program actually does today?
They are charged with looking for opportunities to help cities address hazards and mitigate hazards in advance. So, the Earthquake Brace and Bolt Program has funding from, I believe they have some state funding, and I believe they have some FEMA funding that supports the Earthquake Brace and Bolt. And there was recent legislation that expanded the types of properties that could be covered. Originally, it was just single-family residences, but recent legislation expands that to include properties with up to 10 units.
Okay. And the, you said it's a joint powers authority?
Yes.
Between whom and whom?
California Earthquake Authority and the Governor's Office of Emergency Management Services.
Got it. Okay. Well, to me, I think that's probably, and I, and I hear you, Mr. Sahel, that we want to limit, I think what we want to do is limit the range of things that we ask you to pursue, because there's only a certain amount of resources.
Those that have city funding implications. On this one, for example, this is, you know, state funding, if you will, separate from, from city funding. So, if it's a resource that hasn't really been tapped into all that much by city residents, this is something that we definitely think we should pursue.
Okay. Well, I think that then, let me sort of just be even more succinct. And I think the two easy ones, which aren't going to necessarily be easy in terms of results, are items B and H. I think we should figure out how to, see if there's any support that we can get from the JPA. And certainly, now that there's a mandate out there, I would hope that the financial sector in Los Angeles and other places would see that this is a, an opportunity for the property owners as well as the financial institutions. So that should be fairly easy to put together. The one that I think that is the most appealing to me here is the Community Development Block Grant. Not because we're flush with money, but because I think that is, this is something that we probably could have a lot of latitude in designing a program and some flexibility. It will not make the consolidated plan conversation any easier, because it is a new competing conversation. But I think the opportunity to have some preservation of housing stock, in particular, affordable housing stock, if the, the report that I read is correct here, it says that most of these units that are in this universe are likely to be affordable by some sort of definition. I think that makes the most sense to, for us to pursue. But it begs a couple of questions. Who should be able to avail themselves of the potential funding that comes out of that? There wouldn't be enough here, in my opinion, to sort of cover the entire universe of the mandate. So we're going to have to figure out some thresholds here. I am excited that the PACE program has come on board, because to me, it seems that it could serve as a contractor/ financer of last resort for folks who have some challenges in receiving traditional financing. And maybe we tailor the Community Development Block Grant sort of program, if we're able to build one, for those hardship cases. And I don't know how we would define that. But it seems to me that that's the one that's worth pursuing. I don't know that there's any real value, I shouldn't say real value, I don't think that there's significant value in the fee waivers or the rebates. And certainly, debt financing is probably the hardest to do here, because we're going to have to get 2/3 of the vote of the city residents to, to go along with that. But I think when we get to item two, Mr. Chair, I think it's important for us to understand what the current framework is for reimbursement, what the proposed 50-50 will be, and contrast that with some real-world examples. Because today, there are property owners who are voluntarily, previous to the mandate, doing seismic retrofits, and they currently are passing through the cost at 100% rate. And we should understand what those numbers look like. But if I had to just sum up, I think B and H are easy for me to say, the easiest of the two options here to try to pursue. C is something that I think in-house, we should try to figure out how to do.
Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. But again, I appreciate the effort the staff has done. This has been a, sort of a work in progress, and all parties have weighed in, I think, in a way that has made the discussion a lot more, more realistic. I too think the focusing in on the B and H are reasonable ways to proceed. But I'm interested about this block grant possibility. Specifically, you know, I wonder how much would be needed, need to be allocated to make something like that successful? What kind of a threshold amount? Not that it exists or is laying around for us, but what kind of dollars are we talking about for that? And what role do you think the city would play in that, in actually promoting the workshops, conducting workshops? What's the...
Are you talking about the bank workshops?
I'm talking about now using block grant funds.
The block grant?
Yeah.
I think that that would be a policy decision that the mayor and council would need to make about how much of the city's allocation you would want to dedicate to this program.
And really, because it would be a new program, there would have to be decisions made as to who's going to be running this program. Is it going to be run out of the Housing, Community Investment Program Department, rather, or is it going to be run out of Economic Development, or is it going to be run out of some other program, but, some other department? But there would have to be discussion about, you know, department staffing requirements in order to be able to run this program. If we are providing resources now to, to members of the community for, for just happen rehab.
So the research show that other communities are doing something similar, using their block grant funds for this purpose? Or this is just kind of digging outside the aisle? No recommendation from you?
I did come across one city that was using their CDBG block grants, and of course, I can't remember which city that was. But there were actually several other examples of cities that were using their tax increment funding, which is not available to us anymore. But we, we could look into using CDBG funding and, and identify the broad issues we would want direction on.
There are lots of needs, you know, competing for those funds. But I think it'll be interesting to see what...
Yeah. I mean, there's definitely a lot of, a lot of need associated with the CDBG funds. But this is, this could be one of those aspects where, where the metrics are there to, you know, the, as, as the feds want us to go to more evidence-based type of programming, this is one where the, the evidence is going to be there. You're going to have a refurbished rehab, you know, units, affordable housing that you now have in stock for a longer period of time.
Well, especially if you use, what you say is true, 99% of the soft-story properties sub you through the mandatory are, in fact, affordable housing. So that provides another angle for that. All right, that's, that's all I have to say, Mr. Chair.
You said 99% of the eligible units are...
That's, that's what the, that's what the report says here.
Is that accurate?
Names, answers, with soft-story properties, subject to mandatory retrofit.
Yes, that's information that I obtained from housing.
Wow. Couple other questions. Talk to me about the role of Building and Safety. You mentioned HCID is possibly running this program, but this seems to be something that Building and Safety might have a role in, or need to have a role in?
I think that would be a discussion that the departments need to have and determine, depending on what the program is and how it ends up being structured, which department would be best situated to administer it. Of course, with committee input. But I think it would need to be one department that is identified as the lead, as the program administrator. And it could be Building and Safety, depending on how the, the program is structured, or maybe it would make more sense for Housing.
Okay. Talk to me about, about Portland and how they were able to obtain FEMA money.
Portland set up a nonprofit, and the nonprofit pursued FEMA grant funding and, and obtained, the first grant was for $100,000. The second grant was for, I believe it was $300,000. And they used it for grant programs for single-family residences. That's who they targeted for their first wave. It looks like the structure of their nonprofit is somewhat similar to what we see here in terms of the PACE administrators.
Okay. And then tell me about the, the California Residential Mitigation Program, our option B. Why, why aren't we engaged? Why haven't we utilized it more? What's, what do we need to do?
It really comes on to, there is no one entity here in the city that, that is kind of looking at this, you know, from the standpoint of helping our residents tap into this source of funding.
So, so we have a voluntary program right now, or now we have a mandatory, and then we have this funding entity, but nobody connects them?
Not at this point.
And so I'm a homeowner, or an apartment owner, and I'm, have tenants, and now I'm told I have to go and retrofit. But I don't know that there's a program here from the state that would, could give me a grant that could conceivably pay for it all.
Of what I, from what I found, a lot of contractors are the ones that direct the property owners to financing options. So, there have been projects done in the city. I don't have the exact number, but I know that there were projects done, and I, and these property owners were directed to the programs by their contractors.
I think at some point, it comes on to, the city staff don't, do not want to provide, you know, wrong information on a, on a state-run program, or false hopes that the funding's going to be there for residents to tap into. So maybe there, you know, that could be some of the reasoning behind why, you know, there isn't as, as much connecting the dots, so to speak, between the residents and this funding source from the state, and why it's really falling on the, as a default on the contractor that provides information based on past experience.
And in particular, this program has been focused on single-family residences.
Okay. Marquis, or Mr. Hayes, Dawson?
So the FEMA option for Portland, if I understood you correctly, the total amount was less than half a million dollars?
Yes.
Are there other examples where larger contributions were made to cities?
I did not come across any. No. And I understand that there's a, there's possibly a matching requirement for FEMA grants.
Okay. Thank you. Now I want to bring up HCID. Okay, can we get HCID to join us also, and talk about the program, and why they're better positioned to do this than Building and Safety, or how they and Building and Safety will work collaboratively in a seamless way that will make everybody proud of the city? Okay, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Councilman Anna Ortega, Housing and Community Investment Department. So, the seismic retrofit program will affect about 12,000 buildings with approximately 171,000 rental units. 99% of them are RSO units, and those units represent 27% of the overall rent stabilized housing stock. The majority of the buildings are buildings with four to 10 units. And we've found from the voluntary retrofit programs that have been coming through, that the average per unit cost is about 4,300 units. Under the existing RSO provisions, as has been mentioned, 100% of the costs would be eligible to be passed through for a mandatory program. And now that the ordinance took effect on November 22nd, once Building and Safety starts to site these buildings, they would be eligible if the council doesn't change the provisions for 100% pass-through with a $75 cap. The program right now amortizes it over 60 months. And so that $4,300 per unit works out right now to about $72 a month. That's just under the $75 a month cap. We were charged with making recommendations about handling the pass-through. We were charged with making recommendations about handling the pass-through. So in our transmittal dated September 9th, we are offering the option of passing it through 50% to the tenants and 50% to the landlord. We looked at the cap, the current caps under the voluntary program are $55 and under the mandatory program, they're $75. We're recommending about half, so a $38 cap. The amortization period is currently 60 months and we're recommending to extend that to 120 months, so 10 years rather than five years. We also looked at the possibility of phasing it in, but in view of the fact that we're recommending that the amortization be doubled, we don't think the phase-in is necessary. So again, the recommendations that I think that are being considered are 50/50 split. So that $71 average for a $4,300 cost per unit, that would be $36 a month when you split it 50/50. But then when you amend the amortization to 10 years, that takes that $71 to $36 to $18 per unit. So that's about what the average cost would be with the provisions that we're discussing. So there's two issues left for a decision that these include, should interest be allowed and should it be a temporary surcharge or should it become part of the base rent? As far as the interest, if the council elects to allow interest expense, we would recommend utilizing a standard imputed interest rate such as the one that's currently used for other pass-throughs for improvements to properties under the Rent Stabilization Ordinance. So we currently use the federal 10-year rate, 10-year security rate. In today's interest rates, that would be around 3%. The second question is whether the pass-through should be treated as part of the base rent, meaning it would be a permanent rent increase even after the 10 years. In other existing RSO programs, major improvements that contribute to the overall structure of the building are viewed as permanent upgrades and therefore the increases are permanent. Or if it's temporary, it would end once the 120-month amortization period is over. So if interest expense is not allowed, there's more justification for allowing to be, the pass-through to be part of the base rent. On the other hand, if interest is allowed, then it may be more fair to make the pass-through a temporary surcharge that is eliminated after the 10-year recovery period. Lastly, I'll just mention that right now, for all of the units in the city that have worked on, that seek to pass it through to the tenants, we do have three existing programs. We get a total of about 500 applications a year. With this program, this would be really a massive influx of new cases. So we estimate we'd be getting somewhere between 1,000 and 1,200 a year. So our workload would effectively triple or quadruple. Therefore, the Housing Department will be coming back with a transmittal describing the funding resources needed. For instance, we're developing a new software system to process all of these new cases as well as other staffing needs.
Thank you.
If you have any questions?
Let's hear from Building and Safety first.
Good afternoon, Frank Bush, Building and Safety. We are working with everybody involved, all the departments involved with, you know, various council offices and all the stakeholders. We, I know a lot of the, what's being discussed here today will be from the time, the timelines will be from when we issue the orders pertaining to this ordinance. We're working, we're not going to send those order out till we have everything in place, including to where we can put together some meetings with people and do some outreach to let them know regarding the funding that may be available, a lot of the, you know, things that have been discussed here today. A couple of things that we are interested, have been interested in doing is making a couple of technical amendments to the ordinance. And I don't know if you would like me to hear those now at this point? Sure, okay. During the hearing committee meetings, there were a lot of, a lot of discussion about timelines. And we ended up with a final timeline of about seven years for the compliance on the soft story issues. And one of the things that we wanted to do is clarify a couple of the timelines to where the beginning stage is going to be, would be two years instead of one year for them to figure it out, get everything figured out what they need. And then a year and a half to get the permit. The year and a half to get the permit is consistent with existing code, which says when you apply for an application for a permit, it's good for a year, expires in a year and a half. And then the other three and a half years to get the construction completed. So the total would be seven years, not changing any of that, but just some language. And then a few things for the retrofits, engineering analysis, nothing major on that, and some issues with the parking requirements on there. So we are requesting that the city attorney work with us to make those technical amendments. They're really not making any major changes to the, everything.
Okay.
It actually simplifies a number of things and clarifies the timelines.
Thank you.
Folks are doing the seismic retrofits and they're availing themselves presumably out of the rehabilitation program. Is that right?
They're using what we call the Capital Improvement Program.
Okay, and so that means that they're able to, that's the 50/50?
Correct, yes.
They're currently using a 50/50 model?
Yes, because it's voluntary still.
Because it's voluntary and they're, they're doing it over 60 months, but collected over 72?
Correct.
So give us a sense for what that's costing the tenant and the property owner today? Because people are actually doing something that's very similar to what's being proposed.
Yes, Councilman. Right now, we've had a small uptick in these kinds of applications and the pass-throughs that are coming in under the Capital Improvement Program range from about $11 per month, per unit, up to, up to $55 per month, per unit.
And that's what's happening right now?
Yes.
So the proposal to do the 50/50 with the $38 cap, I mean, it actually would make the potential impact to the tenant less as proposed?
Correct. It makes it half of that.
Half of what is currently happening right now?
Correct.
Okay. I mean, I guess it's pretty straightforward for me at least. I mean, if there's a proposal that you've got, it sounds like all you need to know now is whether we're going to have the, not voluntary, what is it with the interest? Whether we're going to go ahead and make it a temporary charge or not? And give me the two recommendations that you have, or the ideas that you have. You would want to make it temporary and the interest, how does that affect that?
So right now, under the proposed new program, the cost of the work itself without interest would range from about $5.50 per month up to $38 per month, based on the samples that we're seeing thus far. So 550 to 38. If you add the interest expense, even at that low interest rate of approximately 3%, that still takes it up to a range of $13 to $38 per month. So it more than doubles the monthly pass-through under these scenarios.
And it, and which one are you recommending to make temporary? You said it would seem fair to make one temporary.
I think it depends on whether we allow interest. If we allow interest...
Then we should make it temporary.
I believe so. And then the other way around, if you don't allow interest, then it would seem fair to make it part of the base rent, which would continue after the 10 years.
Yeah. Okay. Well, so, I mean, I apologize for being confused initially. I thought we were taking item one and item two. It feels like we're taking them both at the same time. So, I mean, I absolutely appreciate the CAO's office efforts to try to figure out other dollar amounts to help make sure that we have compliance. And we should absolutely, I think, pursue, with the chair's blessing, of course, some paths here that can help, make sure that we help the property owners and understanding that every single dollar counts. I mean, I think that what's before us, notwithstanding the decision whether to make it temporary or not, is a very small price to pay to make sure that we are fortifying these buildings. And I wish that Mr. Harris-Dawson was still here. I would disagree with him ever so slightly about sort of the tenant not getting something. They're, all of us as residents of the city of Los Angeles are making sure that we're averting any loss of life if we fortify these buildings and that's a real important thing. But I think equally important is that if we fort, when we fortify these buildings, we will have the preservation of housing stock that is so delicate already to begin with. And so just like any other cost, especially the ones that are available today in law, like rehabilitation, capital improvement, and primary renovation, everybody benefits from that, provided that there are these checks and balances. So I'm prepared to vote on a scheme one way or the other, whether it's temporary or permanent, Mr. Chair. And just thank you to the Housing Department, because this is not easy to do. And I think it gets harder when you bifurcate the conversation, because now we have a mandate out there. And if we do nothing, we don't improve the financing opportunity for the tenants and for the property owner. So I'm ready to vote, Mr. Chair, pending your recommendation.
Mr. Price?
To vote, I think a temporary application is better all around. Again, this is not a, still lots of folks have concerns about it on both sides. Some would like a larger percentage, but I think this is a fair approach and given the fact that we're going to be making these properties safer for all of us, I think it's going to be an important, important thing to remember. So I'll, I'm supporting that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, can we reserve you to come back, but I'd like to hear public comment on this matter? Prepare to take a small moment. All right. Carlos Aguilat, Coalition for Economic Survival. Stephen Diaz, LA Can.
Carlos Aguilat, CES. With seismic mandate now in effect, some 171,000 tenant households could face up to $75 a month increase, which will likely result in displacement, as you know. We must not require that these units be made safe on the backs of tenants who are already burdened with severe rents. A 50/50 cost split will still have landlords coming out ahead. Landlords will recover those costs quicker with vacancies, they'll receive tax write-ups and property values increase. That's why a new landlord proposal to allow pass-throughs charged to new tenants on vacant units after rents have been increased to market rate is absolutely ridiculous and it doesn't make sense. It sets a horrible precedent. It would severely undermine the rent control law and be nothing more than a windfall gift for landlords and a lump of coal to tenants. You must reject this ridiculous anti-rent control idea. It doesn't serve the best interest of the 171,000 tenants in the city of L.A. Thank you.
Stephen Diaz?
Good afternoon, committee members. My name is Steve Diaz and I am with the Los Angeles Community Action Network. It's great that this committee is working to make Los Angeles a safe and better place. Unfortunately, it's sad that we're considering passing this cost on through tenants. There should be no pass-through. If there is a pass-through, it should be temporary and tenants should not be charged interest. It's unfair. It does not create a 50/50 split, even if we are talking about 50. And this committee should work hard to ensure that there's balance between landlords and tenants. Landlords are going to recuperate costs over and over and they're also going to be able to have a safer building that they own, meaning more people are going to want to rent. Yet us tenants are going to continue to have to pay, 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 pay. So I ask that there be no pass-through. Thank you very much.
Harold Greenberg and Beverly Kenworthy.
Good afternoon, Councilmen, Chair. Harold Greenberg, Agla. We have to look at it in several different ways as to justice in being fair. The people that are going to be hurt in a situation with an earthquake are the owners, the tenants, the banks, and the insurance companies. We should have the banks and insurance companies here, because that's where we could get funding. In addition to that, once it is mandatory, which it is, it's a strict liability situation. In other words, if there is an earthquake and the repairs have not been done, the landlord is going to be torpedoed. And one councilman has raised the issue of an equity position. To have a situation where you have people getting an equity position as tenants, we don't get that when you lease a car, equipment, or anything else. Are they also going to say that if there's a deficit, that the tenants will now make up the deficit for the owner? No, because it's preposterous and so is what he said.
Thank you.
Beverly Kenworthy with the California Apartment Association. The California Apartment Association has never said this is, whether we should do this or not. This has always been about the ability to finance and to pay back the debt that owners will incur. The 50/50 split, we can, we get it, we can live with that. We're hoping that most owners will qualify for financing under that program. But it did come up recently from, with some of my members to consider that this is a 10-year payback process and markets change. And one of the things that we'd like you to consider is that if, when the unit changes over and the rent is the same or lower, if the market goes stagnant or drops, that they could still use the pass-through process. So you wouldn't be, you know, going higher than market rate. You would be, you wouldn't be changing the base rate. You would still be having a temporary pass-through that will allow the owners to show that they have this, this funding stream to pay off their debt. Thank you very much.
Thank you. John Howard? And Maria, Maria Nicolades?
Good afternoon. I'm John Howland with the Central City Association. I've testified before this committee on several occasions that a number of our financial institution members are concerned with the ramifications of using PACE financing to help pay for seismic retrofits. PACE financing typically requires that PACE becomes the first lien on loans and mortgages and this lien remains with the land even after a sale. The FHFA-backed or owned loans are subordinated. So CCA is fully, excuse me. CCA is fully supportive of using incentives and grants to help property owners comply with seismic retrofits. Therefore, we encourage this city to explore every available alternative to PACE, such as programs spelled out in the CAO's report. And we encourage the city to hold financial workshops with the banking industry, such as those that the city of San Francisco did. With interest rates predicted to increase shortly, the city should not wait to begin with these programs. Additionally, we encourage this committee to direct H Sid to allow RSO landlords to begin the pass-through process when they pull the permits to begin the retrofits. This, H Sid delays add undue financial burdens to landlords, cause unnecessary delays. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Maria Nicolades. I represent my owner. I'm an apartment manager of 57 units that will be affected by this. My owner would like you to know that as of 2016, her liability insurance is going up 25% because of the added risk that's incurred until we get these retrofits done and that we have no guarantee that this is going to go away when the retrofits have been finished. So 25% increase in insurance is quite a bit. go away when the retrofits have been finished. So 25% increase in insurance is quite a bit.
Thank you. Wesley Walker. Ariana Alcaraz.
My name is Wesley Walker, and I'm a member of Los Angeles Community Action Network. I'm also a renter, and I'm a vet as well, and that means that I have limited income. I see no reason for tenants to have to pay for something that the landlord is originally responsible for. And we can't own anything that the landlord is going to pay toward this retrofit. I think it's a bad idea, it's going to tax a lot of renters, it's going to make renters become homeless, and I think it's just a really bad idea all the way around, as far as 10 years into the future that we still have to pay into this, which we would never benefit from, other than being safe. And I think that responsibility falls back on the landlords and the city, because this has been a mandate for loans. It's not the first time we had earthquakes, and it should have been done a long time ago.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Ariana Alcaraz.
Good afternoon, my name is Ariana Alcaraz. I'm a member of LA Can, and I'm also a renter in L.A., and I just want to say that there should be no pass-through on to tenants, and if there is, it should be 50-50, and we can try and work with that. I do want to say that $15 to $36 a month is a lot of money to some people, and to a lot of tenants here in L.A., and so I know to some it may not be that much, but it is, and it does add up. And it should be temporary, and tenants should have access to the bills and everything so that they know that everything is added up for and accounted for, and what they're paying for is actually not going into the pocket of their landlord. And yeah, that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Tommy Pettis. Mr. Porter.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Approximately 80% of the poorest renters right now are severely rent burdened, paying over half of their incomes just towards rent. About 50% of the middle class is also rent burdened. The funds for this are not at the tenant level. We've said that. A $35 cap, plus the annual rent increase of 3% to 5%, is a huge burden and an additional burden on these already rent burdened tenants. It's just not feasible. And I disagree with you, Councilman Fuentes. I think that the benefit is all on the landlord, because if there's no earthquake, there's an increase in property value. And if there is an earthquake, then there's no interruption of their rent coming in. And just for the other proposal that's been put out there, I think that it's really dangerous to thwart rent control by saying that you can bank rent increases into the future. When we had an economic downturn in 2007, and renters were being evicted en masse out of their homes because they couldn't afford their rents anymore, we didn't lower the rents for them. They kept paying that annual increase. So it's just important not to destabilize the rent stabilization ordinance.
Thank you. Mr. Porter.
Why am I here? It doesn't make no sense that a tenant should be here. Why would I invest my money in something that I am not getting no return for? I know you wouldn't do it, so why are you asking us tenants to do it? Landlords been up here many, many times, and y'all have favored them. During the economic times, we asked for a rent freeze, temporarily. You wouldn't give it to us. The landlord didn't care. Now they here now, asking you, the tenants, to pay for their property? This is not fair. Do the right thing. That's all the tenants are asking for. Thank you.
Yolanda Gonzalez.
Yolanda Gonzalez, and I'm here on behalf of the stakeholders of Boyle Heights. It really amazes me that you guys have already put out FEMA grant funds for correcting the retrofits or doing the retrofits, but you can't fix the problems that we have in Boyle Heights with the excite issue, where we need FEMA funds in order to get the families' homes because they have contamination there. You're out correcting the problems of the world in China, and the mayors out there, when you can't correct your back home problems right now. We have people that are dying because of the contamination that excite created a long time ago. When I was Vice President of the Boyle Heights Neighborhood Council, this issue came up. But you guys, I was told to keep my mouth shut because I would open up a can of worms. I would never put this burden on my tenants. I have excellent tenants, and I would never put the burden on them. I own the property, I own the deed, and God don't pay my bills nor my insurance policies. Thank you.
Michael Millman.
Good afternoon, members. I'll be very, very succinct. You're not getting straight, honest, direct, accurate numbers. In San Francisco, to retrofit, 15,000 a car bay, 15,000, not 4,300. You're getting not good numbers. I agree with the city. They said the report's not comprehensive. It's not done. They said it's the start of the conversation. Why don't you get some AGLA people and tenant people together, meet somewhere, and hammer out something that's fair. AGLA's position, 100% pass-through. If you don't want to give us 100%, at least give us 100% on water, sewage, trash, and on the reg fee, on hardship tenants that can't pay. AGLA's people will roll it over on a hardship waiver to another time when they can afford it. We need support. It's not coming from FEMA, it's not coming from the state. Thank you for your time, Mr. Chair.
Patricia Van Dyke.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Patricia Van Dyke, I'm an attorney with Betzetic Legal Services. We serve more than 20,000 low-income Californians every year. Many of those people, the vast majority, are elderly, very low-income, and/or people with disabilities. We help thousands of people every year who cannot find housing. A big portion of that practice are elderly people that live in rent-stabilized apartments, and they are living on fixed incomes and have no ability. Even the meager amount we're talking about, $36, is a lot when you're 85, and you're a Holocaust survivor, and you're trying to live on a meager pension. I find it interesting that we're talking about basically subsidizing all these risks for private property owners, and asking to do it on the backs of the poor. These people bought buildings in Los Angeles, they know it's an earthquake zone. We have no objection to there being help in finding funding. We do object to it being done on the tenants' backs. Thank you.
Jim Clark, please.
Good afternoon, Jim Clark with the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles. Today, this committee is charged with proposing a funding element to the retrofit mandate. The rent stabilization ordinance currently dictates that renters pay 100% for government-mandated projects. However, we all know that won't be the outcome today. Let's be clear. We are considering circumventing current law in favor of the renters. That being the case, your decision today should be as fair as possible. Three things to consider. The portion paid by the owners of a building being retrofitted should not exceed 50%. Two, all of the costs incurred, including the fee for the structural analysis, the cost of the actual project, and interest on a loan for the project, must be included in the amount allowed for an approved pass-through. And lastly, the funding element being approved today must include some sort of open door, such that any outside funding that may be secured in the future can be applied to finished, current, and future projects. The theory being that the amount of the pass-through could be reduced at any given time, and at the same time, owners could recoup their money more quickly. Thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate your support. Thanks.
Finally, Commissioner Turner, please join us.
Good afternoon, my name is Cheryl Turner, and I am a property owner. And I believe that we should keep it at 100% pass-through. The reason is because there is an ordinance in place which already allows that. And certain owners purchased property, and when they purchased the property, they had a right to rely upon the ordinance as it was stated. And now you're changing the law after the fact. I think that what people are failing to realize is that the RSO rent stabilization board is already keeping rents down, is keeping rents under control. Tenants already have protection, and it causes the rent to be artificially depressed. So now what we're seeking to do is to raise it just incrementally, so that we can cover the expenses that we're required to by a law that was created after we purchased our property and we didn't anticipate. Thank you.
Just give us a minute. So both Mr. Fuentes and I have interestingly discovered we both have allergies. It's amazing. Now we're ready to go forward. So we're going to instruct H-SID to work with the city attorney to amend the rent stabilization ordinance as necessary to adopt a new seismic retrofit rent adjustment program as outlined. Let me say, and this is obviously my point of view, there are... There are sound arguments on both sides as we try to get to a resolution here. My experience as a negotiator and mediator over 20-plus years is that the best deal is the deal that everybody has a problem with, and obviously that is characteristic of this deal. And I applaud both sides for coming together and the work we've done over a year. A year ago, we walked into a room, and everybody was heated and hot and upset that 100% would be passed through, and I said that would not be the case, and that we were going to work together to try to get to a resolution. We have come a long, long way in doing that, but we've got to move off the dime. Someone has said this is the beginning of conversation. I think we're maybe in the middle, but we've got to get off the dime and move forward so that we can do all that we can to ensure and protect our buildings. Ms. Turner, thank you for coming up last, because you raised a very important point. All of us up here are working within the framework of what the current law is, and the current law is 100% pass-through. Neither of us were here when that law was put in place. So this is what we're handed. We are amending that law and creating a new program. And so we're doing that within our efforts to find a way to accomplish our primary goal, and our primary goal is to make sure that everybody has a place in the city that they live and work at that is safe, and that we have positioned ourselves to address earthquakes that we know will happen at some point, at some point in time. And so we are doing what our primary duty is, to make sure that we have a safe environment for all tenants. And with that, then, I am going to... Any other comments? Want to say anything? I'm going to instruct that H-SID to work with the city attorney to amend the rent stabilization ordinance as necessary to adopt a new seismic retrofit rent adjustment program as outlined. Allow for a 50%, a 50% pass-through, amortize over the 20 months with no phase-in. A monthly pass-through capped at $38. A rent increase will be temporary. It will allow for a pass-through of an imputed interest expense. It will allow for a temporary pass-through to carry over to the new tenant if the decontrol rent is equal or less than the previous rent. The ordinance... Wait, wait, wait. Strike the last one. The concerns that were brought up about when the economy turns down, we will deal with when the economy turns down. We are not going to make law based upon speculation, and what if, and what, 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 what. We're not going to do that. That just doesn't work. If there's a turn-down in the economy, and we have a new circumstance, then, like we are here today, we will be there at that time, and we will deal with it then. So strike the last thing that I said. The ordinance amendments should include language that instructs the rent adjustment commission to adopt rules and/or amend existing RAC regulations to effectuate the RSO changes adopted by the council. Instruct H-SID to report back on funding recommendations for resources, including systems development and staffing necessary to implement the seismic retrofit program, along with a new application that streamlines the pass-through process, an option that allows for the pass-through application to commence at the moment. In the language here, "an option that allows for the pass-through application to commence at the moment, permits are pulled from Building and Safety." Request the city attorney to submit an ordinance that reflects the technical amendments read into the record by Building and Safety. And I want to adopt also... One thing at a time. Also request the city attorney to note that if new funding becomes available, if we are successful in our efforts in bringing the resources to bear on this problem, that it would be available to the landlord, that there would be adjustments that would be made with the pass-through done through. there would be adjustments that would be made with the pass-through done through the Housing Department. If we bring more resources, everybody benefits. Right? That's the, that's the principle involved here. And Mr. Fuentes has been thoughtful, as usual, in pointing out that the most effective programs appear to be for us, the California Residential Mitigation Program, which would cover, I think, somebody said 90%, and the bank workshops that San Francisco planned. I think that should be the focus of where we put our resources, but I do want to adopt Attachment A into the entire recommendation, so that we keep those options open, and I remain committed to continue working with Sacramento to bring resources to bear on this problem. So be the order.
Mr. Chair, I just, for clarification's sake, for, I think all of those options are open to us. Which ones, I'm eager to see the CAO's office again bring back information on B, C, and H. I don't know that I would ask them to bring back information on all of them, especially since some of these are sort of tall orders. Is there a way for us to sort of keep them all on the desk, and ask for report backs on B, C, and H? Okay.
Yes, that was my intention. B, C, which will require us to make hard decisions or not, and H would be those that we want on a report back from the CAO.
Very good, I second that.
Thank you. Claire White. You good?
John White, City Clerk, Voice Vote. Sidiel?
Sidiel, aye.
Fuentes?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Okay. Any other matters before us? Close the desk. Motion to adjourn? So moved, so be the order. Thank each and every one of you for bringing us to this point, and we can look forward to continue working with you in the future. Thank you.